Mr. Lane, I assume when they zoom in on you, you're ready.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. We'll call this regular meeting of Tuesday, February 19, 2013, of the Stillwater Planning Commission to order. We'll go into land use actions for discussion and possible action. Item A, Stillwater Masonic Building Association MAP Amendment, PZ .13.1719, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed at 324 West Miller Avenue from RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate to CS Commercial Shopping. Mr. Coots?
Tom Coots, Development Services. This property is approximately a half of a block located between Duck Street, Miller Avenue, and Duncan Street. You might recognize it as the property that has the Masonic Lodge on it. To the north, it's surrounded by properties to the north that is owned RMI, which is Residential Multi-Family Intermediate; to the east, Residential Multi-Family Intermediate; to the south, the same zoning district; and then to the west, by the Residential Multi-Family Urban District. See on the air photo picture of the property, it shows the Masonic Building. To the north, it has the, it's a parking lot for a church, and then some residential. Then to the east, it's kind of a hodgepodge of multifamily and single-family and duplex. Same thing to the south. And then to the, to the west is multifamily. Findings for this case include the proposed CS zoning is consistent with the future land use of commercial. This is from the corridor redevelopment plan. Corridor redevelopment plan proposes that commercial uses should be appropriate from this property on Miller all the way along the east side of Duck Street, all the way to Hall of Fame. The property has been used commercially for many years. This, the Masonic Lodge that's been there for many years is considered to be a commercial use, and this change in zoning will make it a conforming use as opposed to the legal non-conforming status that it has today. And so that's my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom on this issue? Thank you, Tom. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this MAP amendment? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this proposed MAP amendment? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented, or if we can find that the MAP amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, we recommend that the City Council deny the MAP amendment. Do you have any other questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Discussion Commissioner?
I move to accept staff findings and recommend the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion of a second. Bear with us, real. Okay, please place your votes. That is approved with all votes yes. Okay, moving on to item B. Jeffrey and Deborah Nett, MAP Amendment, PZ .13.1721, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed at 421 North Husman Street from RSS Residential Single-Family Small Lot to CS Commercial Shopping District.
This is a request to rezone this property. You can see it's highlighted on the map here. It's located at the corner of Husband and Scott, just north of the intersection of Hall of Fame and Husband. The property to the south is zoned CS Commercial Shopping, as well as the next property south of that also. These, together, these three properties are owned by the applicant. The property is surrounded to the north by RSS, which is residential small lot, single family; also to the east, by residential small lot, single family; and the west by some RSS, small lot, single family; and some RT, which is two-family. Property consists right now of a house and a duplex on the property, surrounded to the north, east, south, and west, on all sides, by basically residential. The property to the south, as I said, is actually owned by the applicant, and the applicant is, based on our discussions, is proposing to take these two properties, this one and the one to the south, and use that to expand the bookstore business located at the corner of Husband and Hall of Fame, expand the building, expand the business. Findings for this one include the proposed CS zoning is consistent with the future land use of neighborhood commercial in the comprehensive plan. This would allow for the expansion of a neighborhood-scale business. And the residential use of the property would become a legally non-conforming use if the zoning were approved, because it's currently residential. Do you have any other questions for me?
Any questions for staff? Thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak in favor of this MAP amendment?
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner tonight. Like Tom said, we were just trying to increase the possibility of expanding the existing building there for Book Trader at the corner, and in order to do that, we would need to rezone this piece of property. All three tracts are owned by the owner, and so this would just be the last piece in that puzzle. I can try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Kelly on that?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak in favor of this MAP amendment? Anyone else in favor? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to come up and speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives, please.
Okay. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented, or if we can find that the MAP amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and recommend that the City Council deny the MAP amendment. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions? Thank you, Tom. Discussion Commissioner?
Dusty, I might just say, I remember I went to college with Jeff and Deborah. That shows how old they are, and I remember when they put the Book Trader in, and it's nice to see a local business expanding. Hall of Fame is certainly held true to what we have put over there commercially, and it looks like a very good thoroughfare, and I would just say I would be for it, and wish them the best of luck.
I move to accept staff findings and recommend the City Council approve the proposed MAP amendment as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the MAP amendment. Okay, please place your votes. That MAP amendment is approved with all votes yes. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. At this point, in light of my recusal on a MAP amendment on this property a few years back, I feel it necessary, and my situation hasn't changed, so I feel it necessary to respectfully recuse myself on this item.
I also would like to make an announcement. I, too, have quite a few dogs running in this race this evening, and I feel it quite necessary that I recuse, because I certainly cannot sit here in good conscience and make any decision on this particular subject on this bench. So with that, we step aside.
I'll turn it over to the capable hands of Commissioner Trey McKeon.
All right. The last, or the third item on our agenda for this evening, item C, Housing Concepts, Inc., MAP Amendment, PZ .13.1726, requesting review and approval to rezone property addressed at 1,000 East Virginia from RSS Residential Single-Family Small Lot to RTM Residential Two-Family and Multi-Family District. Mr. Coots?
Tom Coots, Development Services. This is a five-acre piece of property, is located approximately 600 feet north of the intersection of Burdick Street and Virginia Avenue. Is surrounded to the north by property that is zoned RTM, which is residential two-family and multi-family, and RSS residential small lot, single family; to the east, by property that is zoned RSS residential small lot, single family; to the south, by property, there's both properties that are zoned RTM, which is residential two-family and multi-family, and CG, which is general, commercial, general; and to the west, by property zoned RTM, which is residential two-family, multi-family, and property zoned CS, commercial shopping. You see from the air photo, the property right now is basically a vacant piece of property. There is a garage on it right now, but it's basically vacant. It's surrounded to the, and the property is accessed from Virginia by an unimproved gravel drive through the commercial property to the south. Property is surrounded to the north by some multifamily uses and single-family uses. To the east is vacant, or it's on the same property as an industrial-type use, but directly east would be vacant. To the south is commercial uses and multifamily uses, and to the west is commercial uses and some vacant property as well. The applicant representative is here today, and they can maybe talk a little bit more about what the applicant is proposing on the property. I can fill in some gaps on that, too, but it might be best if they would talk about what they're proposing, if they would like to. But the proposal before us is to, is an application to rezone the property from the RSS small lot, single-family district to the RTM, which is two-family and multi-family. Findings for this include the proposed RTM zoning is consistent with the future land use of thoroughfare commercial. Now, that sounds confusing, but the CG district and the commercial districts do provide for multifamily residential as a use in those districts. And the, yeah. Number two, the, this would allow for less dense multifamily development opportunities. The RTM district, I want to remind you again, is the lowest-density multifamily district. Number three, this provides for the possibility of an affordable housing senior living development. Like I said, I'll let the applicant speak to that a little bit more, but it's an OFA, Oklahoma Housing and Finance Agency project. Finally, the proposed RTM zoning would act as a buffer between the intense commercial-industrial uses and the single-family uses. Do you have any questions for me?
One quick question, Tom. What is the density, potential density with RTM zoning?
The RTM, the RTM district allows for a density of up to 20 units per acre.
And the setbacks, what are, what are they?
Yeah, setbacks on this one, based on our conversations and the way they would like to develop it, setbacks appear to be 20 feet on the south, 20 feet on the north, and be five feet on the east and west. Let me go back to the-
The map?
Map.
That, that had the different colors for the different zoning? Can you put-
Yeah.
Right there. So, the yellow up there is currently zoned as-
The north, this property to the north and to the east is RSS, which is residential small lot, single family.
And to the northwest, I'll call it a brown color. My eyes are not the best-telling color. But what is that zoning?
That is the RTM. That's the same as what is being proposed. That's the residential two-family, multi-family, and you might remember, that's just to the northwest of them, that's where the Grove Apartments are located.
And the red, immediately south, is-
That's the CG, which is Commercial General. And then you notice next to the CG is it's more RTM zoning, which is an apartment complex.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Tom?
Just to confirm, you said the setbacks are 20 foot on the north and south, and 5 foot on the east and west?
Yeah, because the way, when they come in to develop it, the way they're going to access the property will be, is planned to be from the south, and so the south would be the front, because that's the way it'll be accessed toward Virginia. So that would make the north side the rear, and then the east and west, the sides.
Is that just what they're proposing, or could that be anything? I mean, if someone else-
Depending on how places are developed, if, say, someone were to build a street and have a full public system divide out lots, it's feasible that the northeast and south sides, that they could all be rear lot lines, depending on how you lay it out. Or it could be feasible that some of them could be sidelines, it just depends on how you lay it out.
I just had one other question. So is, is the gravel or whatever lane that accesses this property, that's not public right-of-way then? It's, it's like an access easement that's crossing some other property?
The lane that is being used right now to access the property would just be an easement. There is public road right-of-way for Burdick Street. It's half-street right-of-way, located adjacent and back to the property. And so that's part of the plan to get access to the property.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we would ask anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposal to step forward and state your name, please.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner tonight. I'm going to see if I can get this, Tom, do you have to do something special to get the zoning? Just be patient, I guess, is all you need to do.
They're good up there.
Yep. Tom is correct. We are planning, the owner of the property has developed in Stillwater before. If you're familiar with Legacy Park Apartments on Virginia, just west of the park over there, there's duplexes, senior residence duplexes over there, and that's the type of development that we would be looking at here. So it'd be single, single-story duplexes, private roads inside, so the east and the west sides would be side yard setbacks, so the 5-foot, and then the north and the south would be the, the front and the rear, so the 20-foot setbacks. But again, that is part of our development and not part of the rezoning application. As part of the development, we would be granting the other half of this, this 30-foot, this is the public right-of-way, and then there's a 30-foot private access easement where the current gravel drive is, that we would have to be granting as part of the development to have the full 60-foot of right-of-way for a public road to access this property. We do feel that the RTM was the only way to get this development done. We could have done it with the lower intensity of the RT zoning, but that zoning does not allow multiple private, or principal structures on one lot. So the only way to have multiple duplex structures was to go to the RTM zone. There, we are allowed to do the 20, 20 units per acre. However, we're only proposing, we're under 10 units per acre, as the density is. But again, I will just throw that out there. That's not part of the rezoning application. We do feel that the RTM zoning that we're asking for will connect the current RTM zone, that's to the north and west, and then to the south, will create a solid buffer of RTM zone against the RSS, the lower intensity, to the north and west, from the higher intensity of Walmart and the commercial development to the south. That was all the points I had. Do you have any questions?
One quick question. I didn't want to, the thought process on, on bringing this forward, but did you ever think about a PUD and maybe narrowing down the specifics of what they want to do versus, the reason I say that is because of the homeowners that surround?
Well, we're really, we don't feel like that we're asking for anything that is against zoning regulations. If we could get the RTM zone, we don't feel like that we're asking for anything outrageous in this project.
Any more questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that would like to speak in opposition, please step forward and state your name.
My name is Marcia Teague. I live at 1116 East Hanson Street. I have wagged with me up here tonight a whole bunch of materials. I would like to speak to the fact that the citizens of that area fought a bitter, bitter battle against Campus Crest coming into that area. That's why I brought this material to support how, as an indication of just how much it took, how much effort it took for us to defeat that battle, and for us to be able to enjoy our homes in peacefully existence. It went on and on and on. It started with bulldozers with no permit, moving trees and earth. Campus Crest was not a good neighbor. They were deceitful, and we had to fight against it. And it lasted month after month after month, and finally, it came to a conclusion after many, many months with a vote of the City Council of four to five against Campus Crest and in favor of the homeowners. Now, I know that may sound paranoid. That's not what they're saying they're asking for. But this land abuts the land that the Grove, Campus Crest, has now. Now, we're very grateful that they didn't become our neighbors, and one point that I'd like to make to show something of their character is when they advertised for students to come and occupy their units this last fall, they offered free cupcakes and free condoms. And that's not the kind of neighbors we wanted, and that's not the kind of neighbors that these people seem to be proposing. But when, if you approve this MAP amendment, then they can sell it tomorrow to Campus Crest. They have a direct drive from the apartments that they have to this plot of land. And part of the things that I have here, there's a list of some 3,000 citizens in Stillwater that opposed Campus Crest going in there. We also have signatures that required a supermajority on the City Council's vote. We have a report on the carbon monoxide that would have been generated by the 500 cars parked in that area. So you're welcome to look at any of this material. There's a lot more that was gathered. Dave Brekwell is not here tonight. He's out of town. He did a very thorough study and did excellent reporting when we were fighting against Campus Crest. I think I have spoken often of the fight we had. I think I told somebody that we had 20 meetings, and I thought, you know, Marcia, maybe you didn't really have 20 meetings. You better, you know, I don't want to give you information that's not right. So I started counting, and listen, I'm way above 25. I forgot all about the court case that they filed against the city of Stillwater, and we went down to the courthouse. So we fought and fought and fought. They were not good neighbors, and we, I am paranoid, and I think my neighbors are paranoid. I think that a PUD, you know, might be some kind of an answer, but not this kind of zoning that opens the door to multifamily housing. And I would ask of you tonight to please, please, do not approve this. I know City Council is the one that has the final approval. That y'all aren't going to approve it, or you, but you do have the responsibility to recommend to the City Council whether it go forward as it is or not. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have, and I'd be happy for any of you to examine any of this material that we put together for that bitter fight.
Any questions for Mrs. Teague?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the crowd would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward and state your name.
Say, I'm Bobby Rowe, and I live at 1105 East Hanson, and this particular land joins my backyard. And of course, as Marcia was sharing back a few years ago, we did an all-out effort to attempt to try and stop multi-housing, which would have been right in our backyard. And so we did extremely a lot of work. I did, I went from house to house, all over this area, getting, helping get the signatures in order to ultimately have the council to turn down the effort. Now, my particular concern is not the, not using the land. I am wholeheartedly in favor of two housing, two families, I believe is the terminology there, if I'm correct. Duplexes, and I understand, I have heard, whether it's true or not, I do not know, that there's consideration of building that. I have no problem with that, the two, rezoning it to two-family. But my major problem is rezoning it to multifamily, because that will leave it wide open again for anyone to come in and build what we have in Campus Crest now, and what we would have had had they been successful. And so I urge you strongly to listen to those of us who live in the neighborhood, in fact, we're right there, my other neighbor's right with me here, my wife's with me as well, and there are others who I know are deeply concerned about this. So I would urge you to defeat this particular zoning and to have them to bring us a PUD so that we might know exactly what they are proposing. We would enjoy having a hearing with them, where we might be able to talk with them about the proposal, whatever it might be. And so that's, that's how I feel, and I urge you strongly to defeat multi-housing, multifamily in this particular area. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from any of you? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Richard Teague. 1116 East Hanson Street. When we went through this ordeal sometime earlier, we must have talked with planners and, and development people in eight to 10 communities, I don't know, but we found people with regrets. City council people in Asheville, North Carolina, people up in Wichita, people in Alabama. And I think good city planning, good city development, is being able to live into the future without regrets. Now, if the land is developed, if the land is rezoned with this zoning, stuff can happen, and that's what we're concerned about. Financing falls through, they find another buyer. We do not want to open the door, even the smallest crack, to multifamily on that particular piece of property. Thank you very much.
Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing and ask Mr. Coots to come up and give his alternative.
Before I do that, I wanted to ask if you had any questions for me specifically?
I did have one question.
I did have one question. So, I wanted to clarify what Kelly had said. So, the RT zoning does not allow for multiple properties to be on the same property and have different owners? Is that...
That's not exactly right. The RT zoning district does not allow for multiple principal structures on one lot. So, if you wanted to have, say, the same setup, they would have to actually plat and have each, each lot would be platted with the building on it. You can't have multiple buildings on one lot. The same as, say, your, your house. If you had a big enough property, you can't take and put four houses on your lot. You've got to actually subdivide your property to put multiple houses on there. It's the same principle. And that is correct. The RTM district does allow for multiple principal structures on one lot.
And the reason why somebody wouldn't plat is because they want to own all of them. So, why would you want to plat then, I guess, right? Why would you need individual lots if it was going to be one owner?
It's one big project, yeah. Kind of similar to Aspen Heights. You might recall, Aspen Heights is, if you're familiar with it, it's a large piece of property with many, many single-family and two-family houses on it.
Any more questions for Tom? You look like you were thinking a second ago.
I did want to go ahead and reiterate that. That is one of the reasons why the RTM district is what's being stopped for. And then also, they're proposing a community building. And that wouldn't strictly be allowed in the other zoning districts. You've got to have a multifamily district to have that sort of, that sort of use, just by right.
To have a, to have a community building?
Yeah. They're proposing, like, have a, like, a meeting space. And I think at one point, it was going to have a laundry facility and things like that, but...
Is the existing Campus Crest, or whatever the apartment complex is to the, to the west there, is that zoned RTM?
Yes. It's The Grove now.
The Grove, okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay.
Nope.
Okay, we can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented. Or we can find that the map amendment is not an appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment. If you have any other questions for me, I'm right here.
You're not far away.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I have a comment. I got on this to make Stillwater a better place to live for residents and for business. And it's a real hard balance sometimes to do that. I am in favor of this concept, the way it's being proposed. But I don't even think that should be what we're considering here, unfortunately. I hate that a PUD or something like that would require a contractor to expend more dollars. I truly do. I hate that. But with the situation, the historical situation there that, that has already been in place, as I drove out by the property earlier today, it looks to me like I would be very supportive of what I'm hearing and seeing, and seeing it as a good transition. But seeing that The Grove or Campus Crest is also RTM, you can see the potential of what that, what happened. And you can't know what happens in life. They have every intention of doing this, and someone passes away, someone sells something, and the next thing you know, somebody's offering someone a large amount of money for something different. And so, I would not be in favor of it. But I am in favor of the concept of everything they're doing here. But I hate to have to do it by way of a PUD. But I'm starting, after having been on this board now for eight to nine months, I'm starting to understand what a PUD is there for. But, but, and I do hate that. I really do. But, but in this situation, I would comment that I would be concerned at what RTM is capable of becoming and because of the historical situation that has gone on there. I think this kind of reflects my vote last week when we were siding up a, a single-family and a higher-density situation. So, trying to find that balance, that's my thoughts I'd like to put forward.
If I may interrupt for just a moment, there's been a lot of talk about PUDs, which is planned unit developments. You might recall, a few months ago, there was a text amendment to the code about planned unit developments to sort of bring in some more controls about when it's appropriate to use that tool. I want to just remind you that a planned unit development is an overlay district. The, the underlying use must, the use that's being proposed must meet the underlying use. So, the, the RSS district wouldn't allow for this project if they were to do a PUD. So, they wouldn't, they need a underlying zoning just to be able to do the project as a PUD.
We could have the underlying zoning and the PUD appear in front of this commission at the same timeframe. Could we not?
I'm sorry. Let me explain. When that text amendment came through for the PUD, the controls that we put in there, there are certain requirements where they can request a PUD. If you can achieve the, what you want with straight zoning, then you have to go that way. You cannot ask for a PUD. That's why they cannot ask for this, because they can get it with an RTM zoning district. Now, if you did ask for, to answer your question, if anybody comes in for a PUD now, the underlying zoning has to be what they're going to use the property for. So, it would have to be changed to the RTM zoning with the PUD overlay.
That could be done at the same commission meeting. Is that correct, or is that against the rules?
No, that's all done at the same time.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But in this case, since they can get, they're, achieve what they're wanting with straight zoning, they don't have the option of a PUD.
You're saying the PUD would be denied. It wouldn't even get a chance to...
Yeah, they couldn't even apply for it because they don't even meet it. It wouldn't even come before this body because they, it's not allowed.
I'm unclear. If the zoning is denied by council, they cannot apply for a PUD?
Right. This is it. I mean, either recommend approval or recommend denial, or, because there's no other, there's no other...
You're trying to change, like, the landscape requirement, or you're trying to amend some requirement that's...
Setbacks, or...
That's part of that zoning requirement. You're trying to, one of the design criteria or their constraints that a certain zoning designation has, you're trying to modify that. And that's what you use a PUD for.
And it's...
If the density is 20, you might want to do 30 over half the property and 10 over the other half of the property. And the PUD is a way to, to do that.
Kind of, because a PUD is for mixed uses where they have multifamily, single-family, commercial, off, professional offices, or something like that. And so, a PUD would come in and each portion where, use that they had, the underlying zoning would match that use. Okay?
Let me ask you this. Maybe a Patty question, maybe a Tom question. I don't know. What zonings sit in between RSS and RTM? Obviously, RT's...
RT, RT.
That's it.
And there, right now, with this type of development, there's no other zoning district that will get them where they're going except the RTM. Because the RT does not allow more than one duplex on a piece of property. RTM does. And that's the only way.
And the RTM would allow The Grove to build exactly like they expanded last times. It still fits under the same...
They, they could expand, yeah. If something happens, they bought it, whatever, they could expand in there up to 20 units per acre.
Correct.
Because that's, that's the lowest multifamily district that we have.
Right.
Lowest density.
Any more questions or discussions?
I just, well, listen, listen, you know, everybody was talking PUD, PUD. And then when Joe was talking, I thought, we've got to get up and, and explain this, that this is the only way they can go. So, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't understand. It's most unfortunate. I really think this is a great application of the situat, of the land and the situation, and a good thing for all sides that I've heard from, and I've heard from a few.
There are...
It's unfortunate we have city laws that won't allow us to do that. I don't get it, John, but maybe that's another meeting.
There are constraints on this property, too. There is a large ravine that goes down through there. They're going to have to build a bridge across it and all that. So, even if somebody was going to put multifamily on there, I'm not sure they could reach the 20 units per acre because of the constraints. The property that, that Campus Crest was going for before, it extended all the way to the east to this, to the, uh, single-family homes. So, there is still a large buffer here, and it only touches, what, what, two and a half lots here. So, even, you know, even if this is...
But as a zoning, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm often wrong, but as a zoning request, I don't really understand that it's pertinent that we even talk about what they're planning to do. Because I know what, you know, things change.
Right. And you do need to know what is, what can go on there if, for some reason, the, the plan changes. Yeah, I, I understand that. I'm just explaining, you know, even if, you know, this is RTM, and they want to come over in here, you still have this buffer zone. And you're going to have, they'd have to get that rezoned to, to make a bigger development. So, there are some buffers there. I mean, some guidelines, yeah.
Patty, what is the red zoning?
Right down here?
Yes.
That is CG. That's Commercial General.
See, I guess I look at this from a little bit different angle. I would almost be more concerned that somebody might come in and want to rezone that CS or CG.
Right.
Which, to me, would be a much worse situation than RTM.
Right.
In terms of what you could put in there with CG or CS. And you could argue that because it abuts CG and CS, that, you know, you have...
It's a legitimate zoning request, yeah.
If you look at the things you can put in CG and CS, it's a lot more intense. You could have a restaurant or something with lots of waste. I don't know. I'm just saying, there could be some other things. I'm just presenting a different look at it, I guess.
That's, that's true. It, you do have a, a good point. Because these zoning districts do abut the property, somebody could come in and request the zoning for that.
Any more questions? Discussion?
If this is turned down this evening, if we vote and turn it down, do they have any mechanism to come back before us again?
It still goes to council. It'll still go to council, and it'll just be with this body's recommendation.
If it is, if you recommend denial to the city council, and the city council, you know, takes your recommendation and denies the request, then there is a moratorium on them coming back and trying to rezone this property again, a year's moratorium. Also, the reason why they're asking for the zoning, and I don't, I don't know if Kelly kind of went into it, but it is an OFA project. They have to apply for a grant. And one of the requirements is the correct zoning has to be on the property to apply for that grant. And so, that's why this is coming in now.
I personally have a problem opening up the door to RTM on this particular space and would not, I would not feel comfortable voting for it, although I don't, I don't feel completely comfortable voting it down because I think it's a wonderful use of the land. And it is an ideal situation for the neighbors. If they could get 10 duplexes with elderly people, that's a lot different than screaming college kids. And that is an ideal situation for most people. But I wonder, I would suggest possibly maybe tabling this to give the developer some time to maybe meet with the residents and see if, if they can come to some kind of agreement that's outside of our bounds, since we can't really do anything with a PUD.
We don't have the time. There is a timeframe. You have to get the grant into OFA. And that's why we hurried this through, to try to get the zoning set to meet their deadline. It has to go forward. I'm sorry.
Kelly wants to make a comment.
Okay.
Even if we did have the time, we would still be asking for a straight rezoning. And so, you would still need to be considering, unfortunately, all the other things that could go there. So, even if we were able to, to meet with the surrounding owners, we still couldn't guarantee, I mean, honestly, that, that's what you would get. Without a PUD, that's the only way.
I think, and I, I think it always seems, it's always taxing on everyone up here because you're making a decision on someone else's property. You're making a decision on someone else's investment. I'd kind of like to maybe reiterate or agree with a lot of what Mr. Parth said. If I was looking at this as a straight rezoning, to me, I always look at what's going to be a buffer. What's going to be a buffer from that commercial shopping to that RSS. Exact same, I mean, I had the exact same thing that was on my property, my personal property, is RSS. We looked at doing a, a RTM right next to it. And I had to look at that from my own perspective at that time. So, I don't take this lightly. And I know it's probably my feelings. It may not be popular up here. I mean, definitely not popular, maybe in the crowd. But to me, the historical data aside and the historical battle that you guys went through, to me, it's a buffer. And it's a, it's an RTM, is a, is a, it's definitely an increase in zoning, but it's a decrease in what could potentially be there. So, I would, in light of the PUD ideas and stuff, I would probably be in favor of it.
Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we find that the map amendment is not appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity and recommend that city council deny the map amendment.
Second.
Place your, place your votes in a moment. Joe seconded. Right. The votes, we have two abstains, two noes, and three yes. So, the amendment, the motion does go forward with a three to two vote, two abstentions to council. Recuses, yeah. Three to. Charlie, do you want to knock on there and see if Dusty's...
Do we have to bring him back?
He's maybe asleep. Be quiet.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Hugh. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item three, plans, policies, ordinances for discussion and possible action. We had a, a text amendment to chapter 23 on the agenda, and I see here that staff has requested that this item be withdrawn. John, do we need to take action on that? Okay. With that, we'll move on to miscellaneous items from staff for discussion and possible action. Our next planning commission meeting will be March 5, 2013, at 5:30. With that, Chairman asks for a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Please place your votes. We are adjourned. Thank you.